Kind of a brief overview. I was kind of looking and just hoping that us students would be here, unfortunately. A couple of things that have transpired since the previous meeting that was held. One component was that we heard some of the concerns about people that had been the folks that had not received a previous warning, so we get a $250 ticket. So what we wanted to do was to make sure that this was designed to kind of go after people that were repeat offenders. So the Board of Health had already keep information on the number of contacts that we'd have. We've got a letter, we've got warnings, we've got a mailer on the front door. And then they were to make a recommendation to the hearing officer. The hearing officer would reduce the fine from $250 down to a fine of more of a written warning. So they were supposed to just provide a recommendation. Hearing officer was given instruction, proof policy by himself, to administrative directives to implement that. Because that was always the intent, was educate first and fine second. So we made an effort to do that. Secondly, we have also put forth, we do have quite a few appeals that have come in. So we do have a proposal that will be coming up to the council for their consideration in regards to appointing additional people to be in municipal hearing offices so we can deal with the volume. That will be, I think it's going to be in the package this Thursday, so I'm not going to get into that because we actually review it and get back. But I think the idea was to, we had been collecting information on how many folks got, how many contacts they had at the town. And then those folks that had limited contacts with us, we, the Board of Health, the Department of the Recognition Hearing Offices, reduce those fines. In my review, I just took a spot sample, a volume of two-thirds of them had anger from two to threes to, I think, as high as seven contacts before they were sent out as a fine. So the education piece was fairly robust and, I think, was serving the intended purpose. The other part to it is that the police officers will now only look at those homes that have received repeat notices. So they will not just on their own find issues, they will respond to locations that have not responded favorably to the education component. So I think we've made an effort to hone in, the enforcement efforts of this, and to do more in line with, I think, what our, what actually the original intent of administration was, was to educate first and then enforce second. And I think those changes have helped to define that process. And that's all I really have in terms of specifics for general for chapter enforcement efforts. But I know really, the point of mine was too bold, one, Mr. Clarkson wanted to approach, and I know that was kind of issues.
So as a follow-up on that, I still comment on our discussions. My concern is the, you know, a lot of the concerns that landlords have had, and compliance being the occupants, the tenants, the people actually breaking the rules, compliance, I find needs to be more engaged to that part of it. And if the landlords could help to identify the tenants that are being most unwilling to change, then I think our enforcement efforts need to be focused on the actual resident themselves as the bylaw implicates. And I'll hold forward to that and see how this, some of these changes move forward. But I'm not going to, I voted on something in regard to a bylaw of a state in regard to tenants and occupants and landlords. And I expect the residents who utilize our services, not just the landlords who provide a place or them to uphold those rules. So I'll just continue on that mantra for a while, and hopefully we can get this under control and get the worst offenders, you know, to comply. So, Ms. McDonald first.
Do I have two questions? How many total trips are through you to the town manager? How many total tickets were issued in the period that enforcement began?
At the last count that I saw, I thought it was about 330.
And how many were appealed?
Well, the 330 was the...
That was the total of tickets?
That was the total of tickets issued. I'm not, I'm not sure what the number of appeals were.
I heard in the range of 160.
Yeah, honestly, I'm just on the one.
That's in the range.
In the range.
Councilor Kitchin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For you and to Mr. Clark, I guess, or any councilors that are present. Mr. Clark, have you had a lot of complaints about outside Southbridge? People just bringing in and dropping off trash and putting it in the front of two- and three-deckers and even private homes? Because I'm starting to get a number of phone calls.
Yeah, I know that we've had some information, and I know that the gentleman from Green Brown has actually conducted some sting operations that have monitored those situations. And so as those come up and as the tenant, if the landlord of the tenant believes that's the case, you should absolutely positive, we will let the Board of Health, the Health Department know, because that PND, one of the things that we would do in that circumstance, is the gentleman from Green Brown would go out, open the bag, and if there's evidence, let's just say Connecticut address, and that home or landlord would not be fined. So we are looking at those specific cases, and I know that in that circumstance, when they go out and they do, if it's proven that it's from our, then we're attempting to, well, we're not definitely penalizing the people for that. But in terms of the enforcement effort for folks that are in Connecticut, I'd have to check with the police to see what remedies we potentially have against folks that are from...
Okay, thank you. We're going to continue with the committee first, and then we'll get to the citizens.
Yes, thinking that, Chair, any answer to the question asked by Councilor Kitchin, which I thought was a good one. I've gotten that same complaint. In fact, one person that spoke to me about it reminded me that at the meeting, I had questioned, I think it was the police chief or somebody at the podium on this, when I expressed some concern about this, and we were told that the police officer would open the bag and look at it to make that determination. And this particular resident said that wasn't the case. But they said that this is happening, I've heard it now from three days, people have put last two weeks where somebody has come by and dropped a bag off in front of their home.
To that point, that's something that we've talked about for quite some time now, a couple of years, actually, just this, that's come up. And I know that Kim Grant and before her, Melissa, they'd all talked about going out to homes where people were complaining about this and opening up. And we've talked about this at council in front of the TV. And in order to test to have compliance, we need to get money from the tenants, the land, what we're seeing is happens so that we can actually get the bag before it's taken away, or whatever the problem is. But certainly, I encountered the same comment by a landlord recently, saying the tenants are brave, they have their number of containers and everything, but, you know, an extra bag. And I said, well, is there any, if your tenants see something happening, you have, we have to work together. As far as, my understanding would not be that a police officer would open the bag unless he had a reason to open the bag. He would just assume it belongs with the trash. So they still need to, they still need to let us know if they feel they've gotten a ticket.
No, probably, of course.
So, I mean, I know that Dick Rehber was supposed to be investigating more than Kim Grant, but that's, again, my experience of complaining about this for quite some time.
There's one follow-up question to that, because the thing that comes to mind is, in doing so, to what extent do we have concerns of evasion of privacy in doing that?
None, I asked that question previously. Once it's on the curb, it's trash, it belongs to, you know, it's disposed of. So I ask that same question, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Then with Mr. James.
I think what we've had here with this Brown-Green consulting in here is there's been a zeal to the job, which, you know, somebody's excited to do their job and do it well, and I understand that, but it's put a fear throughout the community. They're afraid that if they do something wrong, they're going to get hit with a $250 fine. Mr. Clark explained how we've tamed that down, and we've got a process now to do warnings first, so it's not going to be just the first time you get a mistake, you get hit with this issue. And I think that's the right direction. But the other component of this is the amount of the fine. It's $250, and I don't think there's anybody out there that feels like that's reasonable. How do we go about changing that?
Good point, and to our conversations previously, too. Mr. James, I do appreciate your review of that, because we've commented on this, a number of us have. Some of us don't see it the same, and that's, you know, independent opinion on that. I was thought the finest, too. I also have liked to seen it in the revenue, or like to seen it, you know, that no more $250 or to that point. So I'm not sure if it's in that, a matter of motion from this subcommittee, put it on another agenda item, whether it can be brought up under this agenda item or not at this moment. But I certainly do not see the need to be $100, $250, and then reduce it half anyway, or, you know, I think, I think we can come more in line. And that, I actually get a lot of comments with landlords saying, if it were more reasonable, it would hurt us so much. I would feel, maybe I just pay it and I'll worry about it, because I've got a dumpster to do something anyway. And I, and I hear what they're saying. Of course, compliance is our, is what we're trying to do here, and I don't have a problem with that reduction. And right now, Bylaw Review Committee is doing their thing, but obviously, this is something that's enforcement. We voted as a council to go to 250, I believe, on the fine? I don't know if that was, was that, no?
Is there no, no council action vote?
So we chose the 250 fine, it's in the bylaws?
Well, just, just to comment on the $250, and I asked this question, because quite honestly, it's a very question, and it's very high. I know I answered it at the public meeting, but not necessarily perhaps for everyone that's here this evening. When I asked the question, it weighed the 250, I think. And I guess it was a junk car bylaw, that if people had two brand registration vehicles in their car, in their yard, that the town went, initially, they did fines of $25, $50, $70, and people were basically... So the town, this is probably 20 years ago, I mean, Nick Torres, who's been with us for over 25 years, who went and relayed the story, so it's probably over 20 years that this thing's been in place, that in order to get people, they, it was a bylaw committee or some group, council obviously has to amend any bylaws, so at some point, it had to be council action, that they presented, and they said, well, what is the number that's going to compel us to change behavior? And the number that they reached was $250. And if you drive around town, there's not that many junk vehicles on the streets anymore because that fine was deemed to be sufficient to get people's attention, not get their attention, but to change your behavior. So on this, that bylaw that is structured, and I think it's structured a little differently, where a whole bunch of laws fall under that. So the 250 change, I think it has to be thought through. Is it just going to be for this, or is it going to be for the other ones? That acts as the enforcement tool on that if you were to reduce it down, you could be moving in a direction where you are going to have people that will just say, you know, it's not that big of a deal. The one thing I would just say, and I know this isn't going to be a popular thing to say, but in doing the education piece alone, we had between 30 and 50 calls a day for trash violators. Once the enforcement really started in earnest in February, those numbers have gone down to even some days now. So, you know, the number of folks that have got the fines even since that public meeting has significantly dropped. And like I said, we are just focusing on the worst offenders. And if you take away that tool to change behavior, now one of the worst offenders is going to do it. So I just, I think some thought has to be given. Obviously, we have a direction the council wants, and we're one and happy to work with it. And that wasn't something I inherited, so I'm just articulating what I heard. But I think it's something that the council, quite honestly, should give some thought to, if that number is a lesser number, and certainly we should have changed that.
Well, we've got their attention, but I still think it's too big a handle we're heading with. And if it's a motion that it takes to be able to get it on a future agenda, I'd like to make that motion.
And to that point, you know, going with your rationale of the 250, junk cars and such, going back to discussing having an August meeting in terms of snow compliance, it went 25, 50, and that's a daily scenario with parking, for instance, and it's a $50 fine. This is a weekly scenario with trash, not a daily issue, it's something they have to comply with weekly. So I see it being more than 50, but seeing that 250 being just not, not a reasonable number for this community, and I certainly support a lower amount than that. So again, I have to really counsel this to go.
I'll second this motion at some point to get that...
Put it on a future agenda.
Do I have an actual motion?
Yeah.
So yes, we have...
Is that not the way it's done?
Well, it's by law.
Right, but we can, we can make a motion to entertain the reduction of the fee structure, please. And so in a second, so discussion on that, we can go, go ahead. As you, Councilor McCall, had her hand up the floor.
I don't support that. I believe that the $250 fine is exactly what it should be. If you are in violation and you receive a warning, you now know that you're in violation if you continue to do it. Pay your $250 fine, maybe you won't do it again. Behavior changing is not an easy thing. Getting people to get rid of their junk cars instead of leaving them on their property, or putting them halfway between their property and your neighbor's property was not an easy thing to do. Didn't happen overnight. You think this would happen overnight? I'm not surprised that people are up in arms about this. They've been allowed to get away with doing just what they pleased for 20 years. So all of a sudden, we're enforcing a bylaw that a lot of people want it enforced as opposed to other things that were brought forward as an initiative to get this whole program started. All I heard for months was just enforce what's on the books, or enforcing what's on the books. And when it burns you, you complain about it. And I expect that. I was very upset to hear that people were getting $250 fines and not a warning. And when I brought it up with the manager, and he looked into it himself, he found out that that really wasn't the case, that a lot of these $250 fines came after warnings. So I guess if I got a warning that I was in violation of a trash law, and that the fine was going to be $250, I wouldn't need another warning to change my behavior, but that's me. I mean, that seems like common sense to me. I've seen a market change in the way Whister Street looks, the way Mechanic Street looks. I live down that section, and I know what the streets look like on a daily basis, and I know what they look like on trash day. And they don't look like that anymore. So it's getting through to some people, and that's what it's intended to do. So I don't have a problem with $250, because if you've been warned in advance that that's what's going to happen if you continue to violate the law, that's what happens. I don't, I, you know, and I don't have $250 to burn. So if I choose to violate the law and I care, I get like, yeah, I won't support changing it. And that's just me. I'm only one of nine, but I won't be supporting it, and that's my reason.
We're going to go back to Councilor McDonald, we're going to get to the citizens, too, just generally, but to get our councilors to see if maybe we'll answer your question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I got a couple of things, first to answer directly to Mr. James' question. It's covered under Section 6 of Chapter 2 of the Charter, and which is under the purview of the council. Bylaws have to be approved by the council. They have to be approved by the legislative body in the national laws, but it says that they shall deal only with one subject and introduce them writing in the form required for final adoption, so they have to have the right legal term. I intend to, I expressed at the last meeting, and I'm going to follow through with that, I intend to modify it based on the input I've gotten. And I'll tell you, I've received quite a few calls, this is my colleagues have, I'm sure, and there were more there. There was people who had, were first offense fined for $250. These people, I'm not exaggerating. In the case, in one particular person called me, they received several different fines, and it wasn't even their address. That was the problem, it was a misapplication. And, I mean, the white, the white elephant in the room, it's going to be poked. I mean, we came right out and said, when there was a failure of passage of the smart card, that we were going to enforce this. That's the impression the public has, that's the impression that I have. The Congress made even two, two or three town council meetings at the end, that, well, this wouldn't happen if the smart card was passed. And that's just not acceptable to punish people because they were against a particular thing. I said perception, Madam Chair, I said perception. That's why I use my words very carefully, and I'm saying, look, the perception as related to me. But I intend to modify the law based upon input that I've received from citizens that they thought would be more reasonable. And so I'm going to follow through with that. And all it takes is an affirmative vote of at least five minutes. If it's not put on the agenda for the full meeting, there is a provision in the town council rules to have it done. That's, that's just all I have to say. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments. And just keep in mind, I believe this still would be, there still would be fine issues happening even with smart card, because what would happen is there still would be non-compliance by some people who have the system. So now, and in terms of supporting something from my side, my opinion and my thought on that, once, once you change a number, you have to still stand behind the enforcement. We have to say, we heard you, we understand the numbers, but we still have to do our due diligence here for the entire community and not allow those who are accused to ignore our bylaws to do just that. So that's, we still have to deal with our enforcement regardless of smart card, or regardless of how much the fines it has to be enforced, just like the parking ticket has to be enforced. And ultimately, it becomes a criminal offense on the record if they choose to ignore it and not pay it. So the weight will be on them eventually. Thank you, Karen, but I appreciate that. All right. Councilor McCall, do you want to say something? I forgot what it was. Sorry. Okay. So now, I know I saw hands up all over the place. I saw Mr. Vesperian stand up.
Casper, yeah.
dispersion.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Well, I just want to mention a couple of things. I think, again, I'd like to implore you all to reconsider going back to an incentive-based system rather than a punitive system. I think the punitive system is going to lead to a lot of false numbers, for one, because I've talked to a lot of landlords in town, and I think the consensus among landlords is you can rent a dumpster for $299. You rent a dumpster and then let people throw anything they want into it. That creates a couple of issues. It doesn't reduce the recycling rate at all, it gives false numbers on the recycling rate. And then additionally, it brings a lot of other haulers driving through the streets of town to pick up these dumpsters. I'd also really like if the county could go back and look at the contract that we have with Casella, which provides for the services that Green Brown is currently doing, and was written into a contract that we had negotiated. I think if you go back and you look at what we're actually supposed to be doing through the Casella contract, there was no need for these trash cops, for independent contractors. The services there were already written in and negotiated for during that time.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm trying, let's see. I guess you have some last things, I believe, up at some point before.
Mr. Casper's a negative figure considering comments on the incentive program. That is in the site assignment. Yeah, it's ignored. Another thing in the site assignment, we're supposed to have a recycling coordinator, not for the town of Southbridge, but for the towns that bring trash to Southbridge. And I haven't checked this week, but it's my understanding that we claim, I've heard this before in meetings, that the trash, the landfill contractor says they have a recycling program there, so we don't have to have our trash or our recycling coordinator do anything in those towns, but she's required to by the site assignment. It's not to be the recycling coordinator for Southbridge, it's to be the recycling coordinator for the other towns. Now, I understand initially, Mr. Clark was being creative. In the initial first years, we had a recycling coordinator, but there were no other towns but Southbridge, and those first years are allowed to bring their waste there. So I can see why she was working on a recycling program in Southbridge. But now that other towns are allowed to bring their waste in, according, in black and white, inside even somewhere, I think we're a lawyer, could squish the words of this one, she's supposed to be doing work in the towns that bring their waste there. I wish that would, I know now it's sort of like the town manager's department is running this, where it doesn't seem like the Board of Health is running our trash program as much. I have a hard time understanding, even after all these years, why is it how comes, of why the town manager sometimes does something, or why the Board of Health does it. But the bottom line is, it doesn't matter who's directing it, it matters that it gets done. And if we have 100% compliance in this town, we're only protecting 4% of what goes into the landfill. The other 96% needs to be monitored, and that's why Kim is there, and I hope she gets to start doing that. Thank you.
Actually, Kathy, I just, Councilor McCall, like, this year, I flipped a request, Mr. Clark.
The only thing I just wanted to bring up, because I've heard this mentioned many, many times, is the great alternative to all of this is the incentive program. But I've gotten phone calls, too. And not one person that is complaining, was complaining that they got a violation, they were violating, they got a ticket because they weren't recycling properly. It's all about trash. Bags that are outside of the barrel, not, not, no barrel, no cover, it has absolutely nothing to do with recycling with the incentive program. It has to do with people not knowing how to put their trash out. That's why people are getting this $250 fine. It has nothing to do with whether they're sorting their recyclables. So the incentive program is a moot point here. It is not the answer to this problem. It certainly wasn't the answer when it, when we had the incentive program, you still had trash all over the streets. So I don't see the incentive program as the answer to what we're doing now. I think we need to let this thing try to work. And there are people who get it, they get burned, they get mad. My question goes through you to Councilor McDonald, who's gotten all these phone calls from people who have been erroneously ticketed. Have they gone and appealed their tickets? Have they gotten their tickets taken care of? What's been the, what's the, the end of that story?
The disposition, I only know of two, and I believe they did get their appeals.
So they did get their appeals because they were wrongly ticketed? And the town did, is that, am I right? Is that the...
They got their appeals because they went before the, because I understand...
Oh, a few of them went through me. Two of them went through me, there was no hearing. And they got them taken away because they didn't receive any kind of warning. One person was getting ticketed, it wasn't even her trash. They called me, and I made a phone call. But my point is that to continue to bring up the recycling incentive program doesn't, it's like talking literally about apples and oranges. It is not what this is doing. It's not what is making people unhappy. It's the fact that they don't know how to put their trash in a barrel and put a cover on it, or somebody's putting, going through their trash and making a mess of it, or other towners are coming along and putting a bag on top of their trash or on the side of it, and that's where they're getting these tickets. It doesn't have to do with somebody going up, opening the barrel and going, oh my God, there's plastic and paper in here, it's, it's supposed to go in this. That's not what's happening. We haven't even reached that level. All they're trying to do right now is for compliance, is get somebody to put a trash barrel with a cover on it in front to remove. And that's where, where they are right now. So I don't see where the incentive program is even on the table.
Good point, and I agree with your point, with your points, and what we are enforcing and not enforcing at this time. Okay, I know, I'm going to let Mr. Zoda's question, because that's, because he's standing up for a moment. Would you like, you want to get a point on that, essentially?
I had a point, I had a point of clarification. I'm kind of confused as to, what does a bylaw say specifically about fines as far as a warning versus a fine? And then how do we adjudicate it if it's supposed to be a judicatory process that stems from a public hearing officer, or somebody calling one of us, and then they make a phone call? That seems to me to be highly irregular.
Let me explain, I'll explain to you. I'll make, I'll explain that to you. A woman called me who said, I got a ticket for my trash, and I can't understand why. I put my barrel out there with a cover, I came home from work, there was the barrel with the cover on it, and it was empty. How did I violate a rule? And she told me where she lived, and she told me what it said on the ticket, and it had her address on the ticket, but she swore up and down it wasn't her trash. So what I did was I checked with the assessor's office. They looked up the name, the address. And when they look up the address, they got a picture. Well, what the guy did, what they gave her the ticket was, here's the trash in a driveway, here's her house over here, here's her driveway. You see the picture of the trash, and in the background, you see her house number, but you didn't walk over and see that her driveway's over here. This belonged to the guy over here. And it happened to her twice. And that's how I got involved.
And in those circumstances, if we do get calls early enough in the process, and there's an obvious error made such as that, then, then they are being rectified.
Pretend the failure would go on a minute. No, it's not. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, okay. Mr. Zoda.
I just have a couple of questions. Does anybody in the room know what Sturbridge fines are, Charlton's fines are, or Webster's?
I can tell you this, my sister lives in Sturbridge. She pays $248 a year for trash to be picked up every other week. So if she got her trash picked up every week like we do, she'd pay $500 a year. You pay zero.
Well, I just, my question was...
I don't know about fines. I know that she, that's what she pays.
Does anybody in the room know what the local towns are? Maybe we should find out. Maybe we should find out, to get closer to this ballpark there.
I know it's a dollar bag.
Yeah, no, I just, I mean, those towns aren't like us. I'm talking about Sturbridge, Webster, and Charlton. If we knew, we know those three numbers, maybe it was some.
They get their trash picked up. It's a different story.
What is the fine for trash? Do they have one? I don't know. I'm just asking.
Probably not, because it's all picked up by private haulers. They don't, they have to pay to have their trash removed. You don't, I don't.
But if all the trash was on the road, and they came along, they must have a number like we do.
Maybe.
I don't know. I just ask. I like what you did, Kathy, I thought that was great what you did. Well, I don't know.
No, I don't, I lived in Charlton, so.
Okay, we're gonna let Mr. James answer the question.
I just know that when I lived in Charlton, if I didn't comply with how it was supposed to be picked up, I didn't pick it up.
There you go. It's not a nice idea for South Beach.
Oh, it's not.
Mr. D, I'm a little bit troubled, but I'm sure that the council chairwoman, out of the goodness of her heart, of charity, stepped in the way of the law in due process. I believe that.
Want to put the cuffs on me now, Jim, or? Please, that's our order.
I'm being respectful, I'm being respectful. I'm being respectful.
There was a term "special favors" used earlier, Mr. Sottili.
I didn't say special, I never said that.
No, you're saying there was a term earlier.
No, I can understand what she did.
That term will make the movie.
But, there is a process, and if that process is not available to all citizens, then it's wrong. They should, the process, even though the person was wrongly accused, it must go its length, it must go through due process.
Let me tell you something.
I'm not arguing the point again, Madam.
Just hang on.
Madam, I'm not arguing the point. I'm saying to you.
I want order.
And this is order.
Just let him finish and then you can speak, Councillor, please. Just, can we just make sure one's finished?
I mean, no disrespect.
You just need one to finish.
I don't mean no disrespect. I'm saying to you, the law, we have to, we're a government of laws, let's stay that way. I think that what she did was a nice act, and it was, it's to be commended, but I think in the future we should stick to the due process.
Thank you, Mr. Sottili. It's been encouraged with the due process, if people find a violation happening at that moment at their home, to call the Board of Health. So they gotta take it in hand, the Board of Health could have done the exact same thing. It's not through the hearing, it was due prop to say, there's been a violation right now in the state, please come investigate, and they have the right to then do the same thing that what all she did was investigate. And then they took care of it. She didn't do it.
I'm not blaming.
Councillor McCollum, do you want to respond?
Simply that the town councillor's job is to take calls, field calls, we field them seven days a week, all hours of the day, doesn't matter what's going on. And when I get a phone call, because unlike a lot of councillors, I don't get a lot of calls, or at least I don't say I get a lot of calls, when I get a phone call, I get involved, I get in the car, I drive to wherever it is the problem is, look at it with my own two eyes and see what's going on. And then if it's not on a Friday night at 7:00 or a Sunday morning at 8:00, I call the town hall and try to speak to the manager about it, or find who the person is that can help. And that's what I did in this case, and was able to come up with a solution before it ever went any further, especially since she got two. And that's what I did. But my answer simply regarding process is councillors receive calls about all kinds of things. We're expected to fix neighbor spats when two people live next door to each other, don't get along, and they both perceive a piece of property to be theirs. We're expected to be involved in that. I have been called because a woman was being verbally and physically abused in her apartment building by her landlord and one of her neighbors, and what could I do to help her? I've been called by people who have disabilities, and can I come and give them a ride? I can't begin to tell you the calls that I've gotten in the past seven years. And you try to do what you can. You don't say, I can't help you and hang up, or protocol doesn't allow me to help you and you'll have to wait until Monday morning at 8:00, because most of the phone calls I get are on the weekend. So I do what I can. And I'm not looking for anybody's pat on the back. I do it because, for the same reason I'm a councillor. And that's, and that's it. If I broke protocol, I'm not apologizing for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor McDonald. Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me some time. I always appreciate the previous speaker's candidness. It's shocking sometimes, but it's always candid and it's always upfront. And it was clear she wanted a punitive system, that hasn't changed.
Your opinion is we're not gonna, we're not gonna be opinionated.
That's not, no, I mean, it's not an opinion, she just stated her, she stated how she felt, I'm just restating how she felt. That was always very clear. It still hasn't changed. I appreciate that it hasn't changed. My comment is to the rest of the committee and to the rest of the council that voted for this punitive system, we warned you guys that, I'm sorry, we warned the council that there would be additional dumping. We warned of a lot of things that would happen as a negative effect of a punitive system. And it seems very odd that, you know, come around this time that we're suddenly shocked and are backtracking a little bit about this system. We don't want fines. The fines have been stated for years, that hasn't changed. We never voted on fines, they were clearly there. So either the council is not reading and understanding what they're voting on, clearly they're not listening to, they weren't listening to the people that were speaking. But I just want to point out that it just seems very odd that, you know, come around June time, suddenly we want to do something about what we did. We took an action. I appreciate, I appreciate the council, the previous councillors' forthright stating that her opinion hasn't changed. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. The rest of the councillors, suddenly it's changed. Thank you for doing what is expected.
Madam Chair, if my question, if the Board of Health actually just provided me some information that I would read. Now, under the old system, that was the incentive program, and we were at 16% to 18% in Southbridge. As of last week, the week of May 7, the diversion rate, which means any material, compost, bulk, and everything else, was 48.46%. The recycling rate was 40.54. And to me, in all due respect to some of these speakers, the speaker said, why don't you just do enforcement, education and enforcement? And what has been devised and what was voted, I think it was a 72 vote as a council, was to do education and enforcement. And, you know, I'll be perfectly honest, I didn't think we would get these numbers. So, I mean, it's a system that the council has in charge and voted, and, you know, the numbers are what the numbers are. I don't think anyone's saying we can manipulate it however. The difference between 18% and 48%, you know, I don't care what, statistically, I mean, that's significant. So what we're doing is having an impact in the arena of which, the policy arena of which the council wanted to have an impact. And I think that that message, you know, needs to be understood. In terms of the numbers, again, you know, we have 6,000 households, and if we have 330 tickets of an issue, you know, we're still in the low single digits for people that are violating. And I think, you know, drive around the community, and, you know, we have to have guys come and see, it is making a difference.
Thank you, I'm glad you had those numbers, that's, some of my questions. I know that we've brought these numbers up before, we've talked about the increase in recyclables, we've talked about the decrease in trash going, the tonnage going in over the last few months because of some of the enforcement. And we've also talked, kind of at nausea now, which is interesting too, in terms of illegal dumping, which I've brought up time and time at numerous meetings, which I'm sure we will have tapes of, in terms, you know, trying to get that, and we've had other councillors say, I don't, you know, we should have as much trash as we want to dump, and that's a shame. But I know that we need to have compliance. And again, you know, accusations can be made for the good of the camera, but it's a shame if we go back and actually look at, listen to tapes or listen to minutes, the continuous concerns. Do the concerns keep you from moving ahead? Do they paralyze you? No. You still have to move ahead, and you still have to make a stand and find it. Will that work? And then you have to listen to the community, and never listen to the public some more, and you have to say, is it working? Can we tweak it? All along through this process, meeting after meeting after meeting, the concern, there's no, there's no special time on this, it's just, this is the way we've been enforcing just for the last two months, and we're dealing with the issues of enforcement for the last few months. So there's no backtracking on anything, it's certainly what it is we're dealing with. An issue that's happening, whatever time of year, remember, June, December, it was gonna come once we started to actually enforce. And that's all. Councillor McPhee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Clark, those numbers just from last month, because I believe I've read them higher. Right. I believe, because I read this all the time, as you know, second possibility to you, that we've been in the 70s and 80% of recycling. We receive it weekly.
Right, in our mouth.
And our packet, and I was astonished at some of the numbers, that we've been 70, 78, 82%. So the numbers are definitely productive. It's, you know, it's not a broken system, that's for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor McPhee. Okay. Yeah, I know, you're on the agenda, I would like to get to you for us, and, you know.
I urge the committee and the councillors to review Section H of the landfill extension agreement. It's the scope of service. My comments tonight as far as trash issues stem around, over a year ago, I started to mention to Ms. Grant the matter of upside-down trash barrels. After the hauler dumps the trash, he dumps, he puts the barrel upside down. I always see it as a potential for littering. Under, in Section H, in 2.7, residential refuge will be placed at the front edge of property at the curb line. Empty containers shall be put back upright in the same location. Now, I'll have to correct myself. A lot of people had comments about lids. They do have the ability to throw your lid wherever they want to. They do not have the ability to tip your barrel upside down, leaving trash on your curb when you come to take your barrel away. I urge the council, there's a lot in this 10-page document, one of the things, is the hauler is supposed to be issuing yellow-stickered warnings to the residents, not a police officer on overtime. I urge you, read Section H of the landfill agreement, and let's start enforcing our hauler to do a better job and to follow the rules.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on that note, I think we've had all the update we need to on the trash enforcement. I'm gonna move forward on the, oh, sorry, Mr. James's.
Were we still having?
Oh, yeah, the motion, that was a lot of, yeah, right, sorry about that, I'm just like, whoa. That was a lot. Okay, so the motion we have a second, and so the motion to discuss, to, to, to discuss further, that's a, for the.
Or schedule for track. Just the fine mechanism.
Right, fine mechanism. Okay, so, any others?
Fine structure.
Fine structure, yeah, we use the restructure.
Is that a fee schedule?
Uh, fee schedule, fine structure, same thing. Works, okay, we're good on that. Any further discussion on that, to the motion? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Now, we're gonna move forward to Agenda Item 4, which is a recycling concepts presentation by Mr. Boston. Whatever you got to present, feel free.
All right, first of all, I'm gonna apologize. I agree with mine, and I'm having some good problems right now, so you're going to see my hand scribble. I write big enough, so if you care to share copies, you know, let's just pass them, I can use my cell. All right.
Well, I can look at, I can use Evolence for now, right? Or you're sharing.
Yeah.
I'll be sharing upon, okay, huh? All right.
All right. I know it's like, we're gonna go through this real quick, but.
Appreciate the wire, you're praying.
I certainly did not have the intention of handing it to you.
It gets closer.
System for the town, this is just the concept. I realize, over the last three years, I've been racking my brain, actually, the last five years, trying to come up with some, some sort of recycle reward program since the recycle bank passed away. I'll just, I'll just read through it. The recycle reward concept is built around four items. One, assessed value of the curbside pickup contract, which is $625,000. Okay, that's established within the landfill agreement, that's what our curbside pickup value is to the town. Number two, the established recycle reward account, which is $1 per household unit per month, total of $72,000. Now, since the recycle bank was eliminated, that $72,000 still exists. Each year, it's paid, it's referred to as a recycle reward account, and is presently located, I think, in the Department of Health budget. In the past, it's been used for $60,000, ThinkReduce.com. I believe the Green and Brown contract came from those same ones. All right? The number of household units, the landfill extension agreement initially is 6,000 units. I believe there is a potential, if it may be, for the town to negotiate up to 7,000, but I assume presently we're within the 6,000 range, so there's that. The number of resident, the fourth thing is the number of residents who choose to register for the household rewards and the unplanned rewards. All right? Those, I was, I was sorry, I put in an information request to the Department of Health, Board of Health Department, and I was amazed to find that they could not tell me how many households have registered with ThinkReduce.com. Apparently, ThinkReduce.com does not, does not tabulate the number of households, tabulate the number of home pickups, and apparently the number of hits.
Number of hits, okay. Do you got that number? Just curious.
No. Because the number of hits isn't relative to the number of individual households.
No, I understand, I'm just curious, just like many other websites, you know, people tend to took the number of hits as a big.
I forget that, one more thing, and that is, the material pickup curve. All right? Now, that material is, I used to try to think of, how can we judge trash in recycling and find a value? I've since come to the conclusion that we don't. We don't separate trash, recycling, home pickup, or the ivy leaves. We treat it all as one. So if you go to page two, all right, the reward calculation, now, these are actual figures I received from the Board of Health Department for April 2011 to May 2012. Those are actual tonnage. All right? So if you go down the list of 4,000, 1,000, if you go down the list, you end up, the total tonnage picked up for that 12-month period is 6,388 tons and 65 cents, 0.65. That's the total tonnage picked up for that 12-month period. Now, if you take the assessed value of the land, curbside pickup contract, which is 625,000, divided by the number of tons, you then receive a price per ton. Now, Casella would be very familiar with this price, because the Casella is not moving items from point A to point B for less than this, they're losing money. All right? So that, that figure, $97 per ton, you then lose. You take $97 per ton, times the recycling, which is 1,232 tons, equals 120,583. That's the total amount of that rewards based on the recycling tonnage. You then add to that the recycle reward fund, which is $72,000. You come up with a total figure of 192,583. Divide that by the number of households, comes up with a, the annual reward would be $32. Now, to some people, they may say. Now, to some people, they may say, "Why would we even try to bring forward a system and have it give our residents $32? Why? Because it's a starting..." And that $32 is reflective of the fact that we're not very good recyclers right now. There's a lot more we can do. But you need to incentivize some of the aspects, because I do all the aspects, just because I do, I don't need the incentive. I don't know how to explain it, but trash and curbside has been my life since 1996. If you look at page three now, here's where it shows the influence of the rewards vote. All right? I took the same calculations that I used for the 12 months. The only difference was, I took 10% of the MSW and decided that we reduced our MSW by 10% by putting it into recycling. If you look at the figures, now, on page two, you can't, if you look at the total tonnage for the year, there's not that much of a difference. It's only about 35,5 tons difference. However, when you come down and you do the calculation, you look at the price per ton, you still only see about a $1 difference. When you go down to the final calculation, you see we've gone from $32 to $40, $8 difference. Why? Nearly because we've reduced, we've incentivized people to remove more of their recycling out of their MSW and put it into recycling. And we've also incentivized the fact that if you can avoid using bulk pickup, if you can avoid using the lawn and leaf composting ways, if we can avoid citizens who don't need to use those from using them, that's how we incentivize, we reduce the negatives to increase the positives.